It is six o'clock. I call this regularly scheduled board meeting to order. Dr. Salazar, do we have anyone here to lead us in the pledge?
Mrs. Garcia and members of the board this evening, students from Villarreal Elementary and, yep, and from Palmer Loxa Elementary are here to help lead us in the pledge. I think we're going to start with Mrs. Ontiveros, the proud principal of Palmer Loxa Elementary. Hi, Mrs. Ontiveros. This evening, we'll also hear from Mr. Paul Leal, principal of Villarreal Elementary, who will also introduce us to a couple of students. Mrs. Ontiveros.
She's an avid reader. She's also part of our cheer team at home. Yareli loves to draw and play video games. When she grows up, she wants to be a doctor because she enjoys helping others and she doesn't like to see people get injured or sick. She remembers when she, when her little sister broke her elbow and wants to help people feel better. So this is Yareli Garcia. We also have Karime Garcia.
Why don't we have Yareli?
Go ahead.
Here, please.
We also have Karime Garcia. She's seven years old. She's a second grader. She is a leader in and out of the classroom. She's an A B honor roll student. She joined our EAE this year and did a great job with the oral reading. She helped win PLE's first place, first time, and we are so proud of that. Her favorite subject is math. She enjoys doing multiplication and division. In her spare time, she likes to draw and cook. However, she does not want to be a chef. Instead, she would like to be a math teacher because she really enjoys math. Karime Garcia.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Salazar, Ms. Garcia, members of the board. Camila Perez, she's the daughter of Mr. Alberto and Carla Perez. Camila has an amazing family that is composed of mom, dad, brother, and two crazy dogs, Kula and Oreo. Camila enjoys participating in different activities in school, like spelling bee, robotics, oral reading. Some of her hobbies include listening to country music, watching Jesse on TV. She also likes to swim, ride her bike, play volleyball. When she grows up, she wants to be a traveling vet with a TV show. So you never know, you might see her on national TV wrangling a bison. All right, Camila Perez. Leo N. Perez is a fifth grade student and the son of doctor in Jose Perez and Belen Alvarez. His favorite subjects are math, science, and reading, likes to play video games, and anything Star Wars related. Reading books, playing games, going outside usually takes up most of his free time. He gets to travel with his family to different places around the United States. He loves his family. That includes a brother, a sister, and two dogs. Leo Perez.
Ladies and gentlemen, these children are here to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please rise for the pledge? Remove all headgear, please. Thank you.
The reply of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
If you could remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Thank you for joining us today. At this time, Mr. Castillo, can you please take role?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sandra Garcia. Mr. Ruben Trevino.
Present.
I am here, Martin Castillo. Ms. Letizia Quintero.
Present.
Mr. Ray Farias is not able to attend. Mr. Jesús Amaya.
Present.
Mr. Donald Henderson.
Present.
Dr. Gonzalo Salazar.
Present.
Ms. Elizabeth Dini.
Counselor.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number five, student recognition. Dr. Salazar, I'll turn it over to you.
Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, each month we set time aside during our board meetings to celebrate the accomplishments of our students. And here to, this evening, we're going to recognize students who participated in UIL academics, powerlifting teams, soccer teams, team tennis, career in technical education. And here to introduce us to these students and their sponsors is the proud principal of Los Fresnos High School, Mr. Justin Stumball.
Good evening, Ms. Garcia, Dr. Salazar, and members of the board. As you can tell, the springtime is a really busy time in Los Fresnos High School. It's a great time. Lots of kids are involved. Lots of great things taking place, which you're going to see tonight. We're going to start off with UIL academics, and I'm going to introduce our two co-coordinators. We had Ms. Angela Lacoste, I believe they're walking from back there, and Ms. Cheryl Quelhorst, who will be doing the speaking tonight. A little bit about UIL academics. We were the host this year, so if you've never hosted a UIL academic meet in itself, it's quite an endeavor. A lot of time and effort and planning go into it, and then we hosted it. And the best part about hosting it is, we won it at home. And so that's always exciting and always a great thing because we loaned it to Harlingen last year. And so they let us have, we earned it back this year. So that was a good thing. And so lots of great successes in that meet, and I'm not going to take Ms. Quelhorst's moment to introduce her coaches and the students because that's a reflection of their hard work, is that success. So without further ado, Ms. Cheryl Quelhorst.
Good evening, Ms. Garcia, Dr. Salazar, and members of the board. I'm Cheryl Quelhorst. This is Ms. Lacoste, and this is our championship 32-6A district UIL academic team. On April 22nd, we're taking a total of 26 students to San Antonio who qualified for regionals and individual and team events. And by the way, I just, I don't know, this is just going to take just a few minutes. But you guys need to know this about winning that team trophy. Going into the general meet on March 26th, Los Fresnos was the only school that did not have any previous points coming in. We didn't have a CX team and we didn't have a one act play. We were the underdogs. We competed in 18 out of 23 events with only seven sponsors. By the end of the meet, the second place winner, Harlingen High School, got 261 and a half points. And Los Fresnos, the underdogs, swept the tournament with 507 and a half points. Please, meet the fabulous Falcons who worked so hard to make this possible. First, the coaches, Catherine Canning, ready writing, and first place literary criticism team. Edith Garza, current issues and events, and first place spelling and vocabulary team. Crystal Medrano, Lincoln Douglas debate, informative speaking, and persuasive speaking, and overall debate team winner. Luis Monios, second place mathematics team, second place number sense team, and first place calculator applications team. Ms. Lacoste, first place journalism team, including copy editing, editorial writing, feature writing, headline writing, and news writing, and myself, prose and poetry. Los Fresnos also won second place team for speech. And did I need to, I didn't, oh, okay. And now for those stellar students. Oh, I'm, Ms. Navarro. Oh, gosh, I had you down here. Diana Navarro, computer applications. Okay, sorry. Okay, and now for those stellar students. Jonas Apasible, fourth place computer application. Rayana Apasible, third place computer application. Dante Barajas, second place editorial writing, sixth place feature writing. Karina De La Garza, our most decorated, first place headline writing, first place editorial writing, first place feature writing, second place news writing, and fifth place copy editing. Eliana De La Rosa, second place ready writing. Carla Jimenez, first place literary criticism, first place persuasive speaking. Jenna Balial, second place informative speaking. Andres Lopez, fifth place computer application. Holsten Moore, first place ready writing, third place feature writing, fourth place news writing. Victoria Ortiz, first place Lincoln Douglas debate. Sidney Peña, second place spelling and vocabulary. Alan Pedales, third place spelling and vocabulary. Gee? Oh, Alex. Alex Doudon, I'm skipping all over the place. Fourth place informative speaking. I need to put my finger on here. Okay. Valeria Rodriguez, second place current issues. Melissa Sosa, fourth place spelling and vocabulary. Roberta Torres, second place literary criticism. Savannah Torres, third place persuasive speaking and third place prose interpretation. Naomi Tovar, first place copy editing, fourth place headline writing, spelling and vocabulary team. Okay, and our freshmen. All right, we had Mia Salas, first place spelling, Jackie Barreta, third place spelling, Mikaela Cecilia Vega, fourth place spelling.
Thank you all for representing the district so well. It does take a lot of time to do UIL, so thank you to the students and thank you to the parents for giving them the opportunity to put in that extra time and effort.
Continuing with our recognition, I'm going to invite our athletic director and head football coach, David Cantu.
Ms. Garcia, members of the board, Dr. Salazar, thank you for having us tonight. We have four groups from athletics coming, and each of those groups is really special. And I don't even want to steal their thunder at all. I'm going to let them say what the accomplishments were for their teams. And we'll start with Jaime Vela, our head powerlifting coach.
Members of the board, Dr. Salazar, thank you for having us here today. I'm going to just go ahead and get started. We've won with our girls seven straight years in a row, and I'm going to go ahead and announce our assistants first because without them, this couldn't be possible. So first, we have Coach Greg Peña. Coach Johnny Hyphol. So real quick, something about our girls team. We qualified, 26 total girls, to our regional meet this year, which is the most by far in the entire region. Our region starts from South San Antonio to Victoria to Laredo, all the way down to the Valley. So it is a large area, and by far, the most girls qualified this year, 26 total Los Fresnos girls qualified. So kudos to them.
Coach.
Coach, what did you win? You said you won, but what do we celebrate? So now, I'm going to introduce you, our seventh title in a row is our 2022 state champions. First up, we have Clarissa Rodriguez. Alondra Tiperteller. Tyler Martin. Anisa Doñez. Alexi Flores. Haley Morton. Fernanda Rayano. Angela Carizales. Annette Cardenas. Carol Longoria. Janell Aleman. Saira Ariola. Kimberly Almasan. Michaela Atkinson. Alyssa Brock. Arissa Sanchez. And Brianna Archie. These are your 2022 state champions. We had 16 total qualifiers per state, and like you guys well know, this is our seventh state title in a row. Next up, we're going to go ahead and introduce our boys. Our boys have been doing a tremendous job. Same thing like the girls. We qualified 10 regional qualifiers, which is the most in our region. And like I said before, from South San Antonio, Corpus, to Laredo and down. So by far more than any other school district in our region. So I'm going to go ahead and start with them, and they were also regional champions this year and placed seventh in state as a group. So first up, we have Osuesteron. Ezekio Aguilar. Nathan Evans. Anthony Elvira. And Jaime Palafax. These are your 2022 regional champions for our region and our number seven team in the state. Thank you, guys.
When people in the Rio Grande Valley talk about soccer, which we know this is one of the strongest areas, if not the strongest in the state of Texas, that conversation doesn't happen without Los Fresnos now. And it's because of our leadership, because of the kids in our program. We're going to start with our girls program that is led by Coach Juan Luna.
Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar, thank you for having us here. This year, the Lady Falcons went 21-5-5 throughout the season. Our only loss with a Valley team was against Hannah. Everyone else was from up north, from Region One, from the Dallas area, Plano West Keller. So our girls faced tough competition throughout the season. They were exposed to the best talent in Texas. Some of the accomplishments of these young ladies this year, they were able to score 102 goals, which is rare in a team throughout the season, and only allowed 19 goals against. We had 20 clean sheets out of 31 games. That means that they didn't score any goals on us. And these are elite teams that made it to the Sweet 16, the Elite Eight. And then the last, one of the accomplishments that we're very proud of, one of our players, Ashley Esparsa, was able to score 104 career goals this season. But most importantly, I truly believe that the greatest accomplishment this season was having these girls understand that you can't do it by yourself. It takes a team. I truly believe that that was one of the greatest accomplishments this year. And without any more weight, I will introduce the Lady Falcon soccer team. Starting off with Araceli Anguiano. Maria Barrientos. Andrea Calvillo. Erin Insinia. Ashley Esparsa. Savannah Esquivel. Sarah Garza. Bianca Gonzalez. Aileen Gonzalez. Vivian Granados. America Guerra. Jaleen Jaimez. Maggie Luna. Alexis Olade. Katie Reyes. Briseida Zuniga. And of course, all these accomplishments cannot happen without my coaching staff. First assistant, Jessica Montero. Maria Elena Salveda. Sofia Carbona. And that is your 21-22 Lady Falcon soccer team. Thank you.
Our boys soccer team made it to the postseason again this year. Last two years, they brought home district titles, and so they felt maybe a little disappointed they didn't bring another trophy home. My goodness, it's, again, in the toughest district in soccer in Texas, that's making the postseason is a great accomplishment. Our head coach is Michael Miller.
Good evening, President Garcia, Dr. Salazar, and members of the board. It's great to be here tonight, and I'm excited to present you our 21-22 boys varsity soccer team. These boys are part of the first boys soccer team in school history to qualify for the playoffs in three consecutive seasons. Our record for the season was 11 wins, nine losses, and seven ties. Our district record was eight wins and six losses for a fourth place finish. And by district run to the playoffs, we were defeated by La Jolla-Vares-Lincoln, our district champion from 31-6A. We lost to them 2 to 0. Despite only having four seniors on the roster, this group of boys showed much grit and determination, and the future looks bright. Now, to introduce some of the members of the varsity soccer team, starting with Diego Moreno. Abraham Flores. Andres Lopez. Romaldo Gonzalez. Sergio Arias. Fabian Lozano. Senior captain Edwin Ruiz. Ivan Galvan. Rene Palomino. Victor Zuniga. Ethan Nolasco. Alexis Escabetto. And Abraham Nolasco.
Recognizing tennis tonight, it's a little bit bittersweet. Sweet because we had some great accomplishments in the fall. Our team tennis team advanced to the postseason. And bitter, or maybe sad, because we're losing our head coach, who's retiring. That's William Sandlin. I remember Bill, back when I started at Los Cuatras Middle School many years ago. But overall, 27 years of teaching, 24 years coaching in public schools, and 21 of his years coaching the Falcons of Los Fresnos. So thank you, Bill, first of all, before we even get going. Especially thankful to him because he had surgery recently, and he was going to be here, though. He was going to be here for his kids and for the program, so thank you, Coach Sandlin. And if you want to make your way over, please.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, Dr. Salazar, members of the board. Once again, I appreciate tremendously the opportunity to come recognize our kids. This is a great group of kids. I've had this year, and this senior class is as good a senior class as any to go out on. And they've done a very good job, and I think they've left the program in good hands. We've got a lot of good young players coming up. Just first, a quick story about how I got this job. I don't remember if I told Coach Garza. I was playing tennis with a group of guys at Hannah, and we finished up, and this coach said, hey, Bill. I was an assistant coach at Rivetta, and he said, hey, Bill, you want to be a head coach again someday? And I said, well, I'm working here with Danny. And I said, "Well, I'm working here with Danny. I'll just work a few years, see what comes up. If it's interesting, I'll apply." And he said, "Well, if you want to apply in Los Fresnos, I'm getting fired." This was in November. And some of you may know him. And then, a second story about how I got the job the second time. I stopped coaching for three years. I met my wife, and she had a young child, and it felt like I needed to stop for that and a few other reasons. And Jonathan went through, we brought him over here to Los Fresnos, and he went through, and was in the sixth grade at Los Cuateses, then he got transferred over to Liberty his seventh-grade year. And the high school was losing an assistant coach, and the coach there said, "Hey, Bill, you want to be an assistant coach here with me?" And I said, "Well, sure. Jonathan, he's in band, he can ride the bus over, and it'll be fine. I'll do it." Well, we started practicing, kids liked what we were doing. We started our season, and everybody's ready to go. We go play our first match against Hannah. Didn't beat them that time. And then afterwards, a day or so, he came up to me and handed me the keys and said, "Here it is, if you want it. I'm too busy. I've got a master's classes, little kids, all this kind of stuff." And we coached all year, did everything, continued. At the end of the year, checkout time comes, and I said, "Just have to walk up to Ben and go, 'Hey, Ben, thanks a lot for getting me back into coaching.'" And so, that was a good one. And I won't tell you about the third time. All right. Like I said, this group stepped up in team tennis. You know, we lost almost all of our girls the year before, seven out of the top eight. And our number-four girl in Westaco had to survive match points late at night to come back and help win that match. We beat them 11-8. And then Hannah, we brought them over here, and we played at the middle school because there was four courts that have lights, and every year Hannah comes to us, we usually have to play it again, and they have to come back to finish. So, that match, it lasted till around 10:30, and it came down to a number-six girl singles. And she won that to give us the victory 10-9. And I told the coach, I said, "Coach, I guess you just ran out of players before I did, because we were throwing in subs. He had a few, and I had a few." All right, I'll introduce these kids with their lineup and with their place. Aniston Martinez, number-one singles, number-two doubles. Olivia Noyola, number-two singles, number-one doubles. Katherine Frankie, number-three singles, number-one doubles. Amy Martinez could not make it. She was number-four singles. Lynette Macias, number-five singles, number-three doubles. Valeria Alanis, number-six singles. Sabrina Lerma, number-three doubles. Reyna Perez, mixed doubles and singles. And Louise Frankie, she played singles and mixed doubles, alternated in, dubbed in. For the gentlemen, I have Mark Coronado, number-one singles, number-one doubles. Brolio Montsevice, number-two singles, number-one doubles. They were also fourth place in the individuals. We had a good match to win the third place, try to get to third place in tennis. If we'd have gotten that one, we would have been fortunate enough to play in the true second match, but we just missed it in the third set. Tommy John is number-three singles and number-two doubles. Josue Gonzalez, number-four singles, number-two doubles. And Cristian Alvarado didn't make it today. Marcos Ortiz, number-six singles, number-three doubles. Luis Alvarez, number-three doubles. And Christopher De La Rosa, singles, doubles, and mixed doubles alternate. Yes, and all these years, Coach Gutierrez has been a very much a helpful assistant. He's helped with the kids at tournaments, practices. He keeps the levity going. When I get maybe a little too tough on them, they like to hang around him, riding his van and all that good stuff. But he's done a great job. I hope he'll continue coaching, and I really appreciate his help already. We've gotten along. We think a lot alike, so that helps, and we're different just enough to help out often.
It means a lot that we're included. So, you've seen some academics, you've seen some athletics tonight, and so tonight, we're going to wrap it up with career and technical education. So, tonight, to introduce some of our certification recipients from the spring, is C.T. Director, Mr. Rolando Gueda.
Good evening, Madam President, School Board, and Dr. Salazar. Like you said, my name is Melissa Rendona. I teach Law Enforcement 1 and 2, and we do certify in non-commission Level 2 Security Officer, right? After getting the certification, kids can go get their Level 3, and then go work at SpaceX for way more than minimum wage, which is great, right? Which we're trying to do. If they decide to continue on this pathway, then they can go get their Personal Protection Officer training for one month, and then they can be bodyguards. That's another way to say bodyguard, too. You know, they can work with, you know, people like Elon Musk, right? We also have our Emergency Telecommunications Program, which is our Emergency Dispatch Program. It's a very good program. Ms. Quintero and I, who's my co-teacher, we have been certifying over 100 students per semester together. That's what we do. Last semester, we actually certified 108 students together. This semester, we are supposed to be certifying 128 students together. And let me introduce some of the students that have gone honors whenever they actually take these exams. We have Jaime Paula Fox. We also have April Flores, Marisa Porras,
Thank you, Ms. Rendona. Again, as she's mentioned, if you add those up, that's over 200 over the year we're looking at. The next area we're looking at is CNA, Certified Nursing Assistant, and Ms. Brito oversees that program. I'll talk a little bit about that program.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Salazar, and board members. My name is Ms. Brito, and I have the pleasure of introducing a group of young ladies that arrive to school every day by 7:15 in the morning to board a bus to go to PSC, where they train to become Certified Nurse Assistants. They are not just CNAs. They are the first line of defense when it comes to caring for their patients. Those are our loved ones. They provide emotional and physical support. Their duties range from bathing, feeding, changing sheets, taking vital signs, to holding someone's hand. The bottom line, they are our heroes. To all the CNAs, I want to say thank you. The job outlook for U.S. CNA is above average, making at least $12 to $14 an hour and even more. This is a stepping stone. Don't stay there, move on. The sky's the limit for you. Good luck in all the years to come. And now, to introduce them. I have Laura Acuna, Dariana Aguirre, Michelle Aviles,
Again, Ms. Brito, thank you very much for everything you do. Again, this is the fall. Students that graduated, there'll be a spring ceremony coming up next month for those students that are taking the second part. Next, we have Mr. Muniz. Luis Muniz, he's out of the high school. He's doing two areas of certification. I'll let him talk about those a little bit more.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Salazar, board of directors, and executive directors. Good evening. I hope you're all doing well. My name is Luis Muniz, and I currently teach the Patient Care Technician and Phlebotomy Program at Los Fresnos High School. These two national certifications benefit our high school seniors by helping them obtain a job right after high school in the medical field, earning between $14 and $17 an hour. PCT phlebotomy students learn how to draw blood, read basic electrocardiogram readings, perform basic patient care skills such as ambulation, transferring patients, performing vital signs, and performing activities of daily living, and learn how to communicate well and efficiently with our patients. By joining my program and passing the national certification exams, they can save up to $15,000, all right, $15,000, that's what I'm looking at, $15,000, instead of paying the vocational schools out there like South Texas Votech, you know? So, pretty much are saving a pretty good amount of money afterwards. All right, so, in the fall semesters, out of nine students, I have five students with double certifications and two with single certifications, and currently, I have in the spring semester, my spring cohort, I have 13 students, and out of those 13, nine have a phlebotomy certification, and right now, they're preparing themselves to fit for Patient Care Technician certification on May the 10th. So, I want to go ahead and congratulate my students, of course, of the first, 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 first of this year with Patient Care Technicians and Phlebotomy. So, we have Caleb Alves, Certified Patient Care Technician and Certified Phlebotomist. She's part of my fall cohort. And I have Leslie Quintanilla, Certified Phlebotomist. We have Natalie Montalvo, Certified Phlebotomist. We have Daniel Lopez, our Certified Phlebotomist. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Again, this is the first cohort of students, so the students that she's here are making Thank you, Mr. Muniz. And just to add to that, upcoming in the next month, there'll be testing on EMT, Medical Assistant, another group of CNA, Pharmacy Technician, and of course, Phlebotomy slash Patient Care Technician. We'll be having a ceremony towards the end of the year. We're looking at having over 70 students participate in that ceremony. Okay? That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Doing great things for Career and Technology, for sure. Now, we move on to item number six. We did not have anybody sign up for public audience, nor did we have anybody sign up for item number seven, public comment. So, we move on to item number eight, District Presentations. Dr. Salazar, turn it over to you.
Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, this school year, we decided to go out for a demographic study. We coupled that with strategic planning, and we thought that a demographic study could inform some of the decisions we were going to make in strategic planning. We engaged Zonda Education and met Rocky and his staff. Rocky, we're here this evening, and we showed our appreciation to Rocky by making him park far, far away. Actually, he were over here from Harlingen. Thank you. Welcome to Los Fresnos, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar, members of the board, Madam President. It's great to be here. You know, nothing clears out a room like a demographic report. I speak to empty chairs all the time, so it's a wonder why I'm even nervous. But it's a pleasure to be here. Everyone's been great to work with, so it really has been a pleasure. So, our team's been working on this report. Now, keep in mind, our team does demographic studies for about 70 school districts in Texas each year. So, we've got a research group, a researcher that gets assigned to every district, and then a consultant. So, I've been the lead consultant. Garrett Steele is one of my colleagues who's done the research, talked to people in the city, developers, builders. And then that, there we go. And then we build the program from there. So, this has been three to four months' worth of research we've been working on, and we even made some changes today. I'm sorry? Okay. So, we're ready to go. We always start with the, and I did exactly what Billy said not to do. He goes, "Don't point there, point here." And that's the first thing I did, was point there. I put it on my left hand. So, the first thing we do is look at where your enrollment's been before we look at where you're going, right? I mean, the last couple of years have been COVID, and that impact was seen with the drop of 131 students last year. This year, at the team snapshot date, you were down 174 students. Now, keep in mind, our forecast is always snapshot to snapshot, so that last Friday in October, because that way we have a history. So, our forecast is also going to be showing snapshot to snapshot. What's interesting this year is, we're now beginning to think there was a little bit of a COVID jump during the school year, so after snapshots. So, today, I had a conversation with the administrative team a little bit, and we learned that your enrollment now is over, is 10,400. So, that increase, we believe, is probably more students that came back from COVID. So, it's really probably what could have been your number at snapshot date. So, you're going to see two forecasts later, and I'm going to talk a little bit to that. And so, really, your drop may have only been 100 students as opposed to 174. We'll talk a little more about that. We look at unemployment rates, just to kind of get an idea what the economy is like in an area. So, the unemployment rates here, in the Brownsville-Hardigan area, are a little bit higher than what we're seeing in the state, that 7.6 number. You were much lower than that pre-COVID, so we think that eventually, we're going to get back down to that. You know, it's just a weird economy right now. There's a lot of uncertainty out there. But we have seen other areas in Texas that return to that. We consider 5% to be full employment. When you get down below 5%, it's even harder to find employees. And so... When you get down below five percent, it's even harder to find employees, and so, they, they say five percent's full employment, and then after that, you know, you're looking at changes. Now, we are seeing some changes in the area, and I'm sure you guys are very familiar with things like M B P Plastics, it's going to add fifty, fifty employ, oh, I'm two behind. How about that? So, that, there's your unemployment, I'm sorry, and then you've got your, the, the local economic stuff that we know that's going on. Steel Coast could add three hundred jobs to the area, and then, of course, SpaceX, heard some talking about SpaceX a little bit ago, um, it could, could be about a hundred persons as well. But those are those programs, SpaceX pro, programs are really doing some interesting things throughout the state. So, I do think you have some opportunities there. Then we begin to look at housing, because housing is kind of what drives enrollment, right? You know, we, we look at the students that yield out, out of your current housing, and then we try to also u- understand what's coming, bless you. Um, so, me, median home prices, they remain near record highs. You can see on this chart, the three top arrows are pointing, pointing right, which means that they increase, so increase in sales, increase in average price, increase in median. The flip side of that is listings are down, as, as is inventory at one point five months. So, that's basically when you're in a seller's market, that, that's the kind of thing that you see. Inventory, we like to see a goo, a good inventory, a good market is three to six months. We're real low. What's happening also, I think, is homes are selling before they even get on the market. You know, and so, they don't have a chance to be part of the inventory or be, be even listed. Our team has also looked at the most current census data. So, census data was released in twenty twenty, wait, cuts up again, um, and we, we understand this is based on census blocks. We, we captured all the census blocks that make up Los Fresnos, and we look, look at that population, but that growth of almost ten thousand persons, a little over ten thousand, from forty thousand persons in twenty ten to just over fifty thousand persons, population of Los Fresnos in twenty twenty. The below age eighteen population, thirteen, seven, five, nine to fifteen, two, five, six, that's population seventeen and under, so all, all the way down to birth, and not just school age students, of course. And your household size has gone down a little bit, so a lot of people ask, but how can our household size go down and our population go, go up? But what begins to happen is when you're building new homes, not all those new homes have as many students or have as many children in them, that kind of dilutes it a little, little bit, so we see a little, little bit of a drop in household size. Because we did see new households, but we're, we're just seeing a little bit smaller household And then we look at home sales. So, our team pulls all the deed transactions in the last, in the last, I guess since twenty sixteen, so if it, if a home turns over, whether it's a resale home or a new home, we pull that deed transactions and look at it. So, nine hundred and eight, eighty-nine total home sales in twenty twenty-one, down a little bit from twenty twenty. We saw a big surge in twenty twenty across the state, and I can tell you, when COVID hit, we were calling all of our current clients, saying, look, it's going to get, it's going to be bad, hu- housing's going to drop off, jobs are going to drop off, you know, things are, are going to, you know, and we were wrong. It's, and believe, believe it or not, this is my first pandemic, so, you know, to give a little bit of grace there. Um, I know I look like I may have been through a few, but, um, so, the housing market has been very in, interesting, because there's, you know, there begins, we, we saw turnover where we didn't expect it. We saw new homes accelerate, and I think that's because visiting a new home was per, pretty easy, and then we saw existing homes kind of slow a little, little bit. I think that's because people weren't sure they wanted other people in, in their house, so they, they were a little, little bit hesitant there. Now, the, the new home prices are in, are interesting, I think if, if you check this out here, no surprise, I mean, we're, we're adding, you know, housing values are increasing throughout the state, throughout the country, but Texas is seeing a larger increase right now in housing than they ever had. So, the, the last housing bubble back in two thousand six, eight, when the rest of the country was going, you know, crazy, Texas stayed real, re, really flat, and it meant that they came out of that recession a lot quicker. This, this one, our housing, has kind of gone like what the others did before, so we're seeing some strong growth. I mean, you're looking at two hundred and twenty-eight thousand for a new home now, a average existing home price is also over two hundred thousand now in Los Fresnos, all based on most recent deed transactions. Then our team has gone in, this is what Garrett did, he tried to talk to as many people as he could, learn as much as he can about developments that are going on. So, I'm, I'm, cruise through about seven or eight photos of, of developments that we know about. There's basically eighteen actively built, building subdivisions where we know there's actively building subdivisions. There's ten future subdivisions, so that, the yellow on this chart, um, I guess if someone else dropped, driving this right. So, the yellow on this chart are future developments, and the green are where we know there's active development. And the red outlines that you see there, that last bullet, twelve hundred and fifty lots within eleven subdivisions, they've started groundwork. So, what that means is, is they, they're, they're going to have lots available to be built on, and on another twelve hundred lots very soon. And so, they're taking, usually, if, if you go by an empty field that you know is going to be a development, and suddenly the next day you see a tractor there, then you know you've got about eighteen months before that first home is probably built, you know, and before, before you see any students, because they've got to put the roads, the infrastructure, you know, all the su, all the sewage, so all, they've got a lot, lot of work, but just to know that that's going on, because we know we've seen anywhere from two to five hundred homes a, a, a year in th, in this area, you know, so we, we know it's coming, continues to go. So, I, I'm going to run through some, some of these here and just talk just a little bit about them. In Summer Lakes, understand, you know, this is Rosewood and Summer Lakes, there's some pretty good activ, activity here. What I really want to focus on is student yield. So, the student yield is how many students per home come out of these neigh, these neighborhoods. So, when you see a yield down to that very li, that last bullet, bullet, the point five three, and another bullet, bullet there is a point two, two nine, I think of that, so that decimal is, that point five three, think of it as five students for every ten homes. That, that's the point five, so the point three, if you round that point two nine up, that's three students for every ten homes. So, when you're looking at future homes, so we've got two hundred and fifty-six total lots there in Summer Lake, what that's telling me is when Summer Lake builds out, they're going to have close to a hundred and fifty students there, across all grades level. So, it kind of gives you an idea of what can happen. Now, we're trying to understand the pace, twenty to fifty homes a, a year, and that's how we'll do our enrollment forecasting based on that. Another, a couple of developments, Palo Alto Groves, they, they've got seven hundred total lots. You can see there that there's no current students, it's just kind of getting going, but they had, um, fourteen homes occupied, fifty-seven homes under construction, so that, they're getting going there, and they, they may have a student there now. We now have a new, a, a, a new satellite tool that we have access to, that, so we've got a photo that was taken in March, and you can see the acti, activity there on that slide. This one here, there's several developments here, Garden Woods, Cross Country Trails, you guys are probably pretty familiar with these. Cross Country Trails is getting close to build out, so four hundred and ninety-two of those homes are occupied. That yield there, point three, four, seven, that's a fairly low yield. So, when we talked about your, your housing size decline a little bit, these new homes aren't yielding as much as some of the other products, so that's, that's yielding about thirty-five students for every hun- hundred homes, so fa- fairly low yield there. Garden Woods, you see is at point four, four, and then, then you see a real low yield at Queensland, but keep in mind, that, that's a hundred and eight, it's getting going. When it, but those yields of those, those real low yields will likely begin to go up a little bit. You'll probably, at build out and maturity, you'll probably end up with about ninety students there at Queensland. And then the Woodlands, thirty-five vacant lot, ten, ten under construction, again, they're yielding about point two, two, when they build, build out, I think it'll get a little bit higher. Ballo Alto, the Villas Duplexes and Fe- Feather Ridge, the Duplexes are forty, forty units, that, those lots are, are delivered now, but the home construction has not yet started. Feather Ridge, hundred sixty, sixty-seven total lots, that yield there about point three, seven, and then, then you've got Ballo Alto East with hundred twenty-three future lots, but just four, forty-three vacant developed, so they'll, they may have their first residence right, right now, or, or they'll get them this summer, I think, there at Ballo Alto. And we got Lot, Lago Vista, this is a big development, twenty-two hundred total lots, so you start thinking about that point three, three yield, so that's, you know, you're looking at over six hundred students at build out. Keep in mind, it's going to take, it'll take a little while, if they do a hundred homes a year, that's, we can all do that math, that's about twenty years. This, this is over by, just off of, you know, six, sixty-nine E, this, here's Alimento Elementary.
Can you flip the slide?
Oh. That's what, that's where it is. Yes, sir, this is a big one. So, um, they think they'll deliver another fifty lots this, this year, so really, just kind of get going before things start happening, but there's certainly going to be some development there. And then you've got this, this is Madeira, they, these are some, some futures, they're saying three thousand total future lots, groundwork underway, so home construction's starting this, this coming fall of twenty twenty-two. So, if, you know, home construction, so you won't really see students from this as, from next year at the ear, at the earliest, I believe. Woods at Los Fresnos, eight, eight hundred and sixty-five fut- future lots, the initial groundwork is un, underway there, and you've got, uh-oh. Let me go back one. Casino Crossing, ninety-seven future lots, the Orchards, a hundred and eighty, eighty future lots. Again, this is all activity that's, that's coming, but this is a lot of development that's co, that's coming your way. What, what we don't know yet, because this is something that we haven't seen, at least we weren't seeing historically in Los Fresnos, all developers like to say they'd like to do fifty to a hundred homes a year. At some point, they're all competing with each other, so they kind of cannibalize off each other, so what we're going to try to fix, so what we're trying to figure out now is, what can, what can that max absorption rate be for Los Fresnos? Because right now, we've seen two, you know, two hundred homes a year. Well, if you, if you go back through this later and do all, all the math in there, you'll say, well, Rocky said two, two hundred, there's like five hundred homes a year that can happen here. But that's not going to happen right away. It, it's going to take them some time. We, we've got a forecast that gets you, I think, to three hundred homes a year, that's to three fifty, I think that's a pretty solid number. Here, so, a, after residential, we're also trying to understand multifamily. You've got four hundred and eight students that live in multifamily units, we, we're tracking about fourteen hundred multifamily units in, in the district. Keep in mind, for multifamily, we include manufactured housing or mobile home parks as multifamily, the reason we do that, because it's, it's multiple units on one land, on one piece, piece of property, so that's kind of our definition of multifamily. Then we track those yields as well. So, again, your overall multifamily yield, about point three, five, you, you, we have some very large yielding, and most of those are manufactured hous, housing areas, you see the red dots on there of some of your higher yielding mo, you know, mobile home parks or manufactured housing. And then we got, um, again, student density. So, thi, this is where, this, if you talk about how, how do we come up with those yields, we've mapped all your students to the home that they live in, so we've zeroed in on their parcel, and through this process, we picked up three hundred and seventy-one students that currently reside outside the district, so they transfer in, in, into your district per school. My guess is a lot of those are, are, are the students of, of employees, you know, but that, and we see that pretty typically. You've, you've got about fourteen hundred and seventy-five students, or about fourteen percent of the students live in Los Fresnos proper, and you've got thirty-three percent of your students that, that live in Brownsville studio. But we, and then, this, this is a new, a new report that we just pulled, the T E A Transfer Report. So, this comes from the Texas Education Agency, they release it each, each March, so this has only been out for about a month, and this tracks the number of students that live in one district that, that go, go to school in another district. So, transferring in from Brownsville, Harlingen, these are students that live outside of Los Fresnos that transfer into Los Fresnos per school. See that two ninety number? It correlates pre, pretty well with that, with that geocode that we, we did. Now, outgoing transfers are students that live here in Los Fresnos that transfer out. You can see that, that number jumped this year to twenty-two, eighty-two. Almost all of that happened at the IDEA, you know, with the, the Star Sports Park out there, that seven, you see how it jumped from four oh eight to seven twenty-two? So, that was some increase in enrollment there. South Texas ISB also has seen some, when they, you know, they've only been open a few years, and then the rest of those come from just some local districts there. But you can see there that you did see a little, little bit of an incre, increase there. Typically, when a charter school opens, it hits you big the first year, and then you won't see as big next year, o, other than your kindergarten class won't, won't continue to grow, because they'll probably draw that same number of kindergarten students out or close to it each year. We've got a couple of slides here that just talk about the charter schools, are, what Garrett's done, he just mapped the local charter schools. You, you can see the, the green star there, that's right there i, in your district, but there's, you know, you're kind of surrounded by them there a little bit. This, this is a trend that's not only being felt by Los Fresnos, but being felt throughout the valley, throughout Houston, Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth, but, you know, char, charter schools are definitely having an impact in Texas. And then Texas ISB, this Magnet School District, Garrett was really, he's got a lot of bullet, bullets there, you guys can read, read them if you want. This is the first, we've never heard, we had not heard of this until we got down, down here, ob, obviously, the first one of its kind, it's a magnet school, uh, so it's a very interesting, they are going to add a sixth grade class next year, so that, you know, we, we could see a little bit of a change there. We don't, I don't think it'll be significant here in Los Fresnos, but, but they are continuing to kind of push that mag, that magnet, that magnet program. So, now I'm going to jump into, to enrollment forecasting. The hardest grade is what we, I know the rest, maybe it's what you want, want, want me to hurry to by now anyway, but the re, the rest of the, you know, the hardest thing to forecast is kindergarten enrollment. There's just not any history. It's, it's kind of hard to find, you don't, you know, you go from one class to the other. What we've done is we track district birth, so the smallest geography that we can get birth data from the state is at the zip code level. Where you can draw zip code boundaries, and they, they don't match the school district boundaries, they never do. But we find, you know, we're, we're grabbing zip code or zip codes that best kind of make up the, for the majority of them are in the district, and, and we put that number in, in here, and then we looked at what your, your school enrollment for kindergarten was five years la, five years later. So, for instance, in two thousand eight, you had eleven hundred and seventy-two births in the district, and you, and you had seven hundred and eight kindergarten students enroll, you know, in twenty thirteen, fourteen. That was a ratio of about point six, which means you, you captured about sixty percent of all those births that occurred five years la, later. It was very consistent in Los Fresnos until about the last three or four years, and of course, that's when the, the char, the charter started hitting, you know, and we saw those drops. And then the severe drop in the last two, two years has been COVID related. So, so we kind of know what's going on. Our forecast going forward is an improvement. Number one, we think we're coming out of COVID, so, and so we should start seeing some, some regulars, you know, standard growth coming back, and we also got the new housing that, that's coming and likely going to pick up. So, I think getting around that sixty percent again would be a pretty good target. Um, again, pretty close to seven hundred kindergarten students within four years. In twenty twenty, what's, what was pretty impressive is your zip code, that twelve hundred and seven number, that increase from nineteen, nineteen to twenty, um, we didn't see that statewide, because statewide, we declined in births by ten thousand. So, we, so we saw a little bit of increase here, but statewide, it, it dropped off. So, we think kindergarten classes across the state in twenty twenty-five are going to be fairly small. So, getting enrollment forecast, I'm going to talk a little bit, this is your P E A snapshot. But, but, like I said before, at the snapshot, you were down a hundred and seventy-four students. Our forecast for next year is showing another drop of eighty students. Now, what I want to point out, be, because it's kind of hard to think about adding two or three hundred homes a year and still going down by eighty, but what happens is, you've got a really large exiting class of twelfth graders, and then your incoming kindergarten class is almost two hundred students smaller. So, you're, you're losing just by that attrition. So, what, what you really got to wrap your head around is that, even though that says minus eighty, it's really a hundred and twenty students growth, because we're seeing real growth, it's just not being shown in that number. Now, what I've done, what I, I'm going to show you a slide, this next slide here, uh, is that enrollment forecast. So, you can see out five years, you're at ten thousand four hundred, so we're, we're starting to re, recover from those large class sizes leaving, and then you see some strong enrollment growth. But really, you, you almost have to add a hundred to a hundred and twenty students to every one of those numbers to really get a feel for how much we're growing the district. How, how many first graders become second graders, third become fourth, if that's, if you look, look, look at that, it's a positive number. It just looks small because of those, those classes, I, I hope that's fair, fairly clear. Now, again, this is based on the snapshot date, and I'll, I'll, I'll show you some enrollment by class, and, and the re, reason I want to show you this is, by campus, is because there's a couple of these campuses that you see, if, if you know what your current enrollment is, the campus level that we're forecasting for twenty-two, twenty-three is actually already there today, and that's what we talked about recently with, with, with your team. So, what I've done, and we, I consulted with one of the o, other consultants back at our office, Bob Templeton, he and I talked about this today, because we believe this is something we're seeing throughout the state. We think that your snapshot number might not be the best number to use going forward because of this little, we'll call it a CO, COVID bounce back, just because I don't have another term for it, but we think there's students that decide to come back between October and March for one reason or another, so they aren't really, it's not really based on new growth, it's like they were probably already in the district, but just decided to come back to the district. So, if you look, look at this, then you only declined by a hundred and six students last year. And based on that trend, we turned positive in one year, and, and again, the growth rate's the same, so you add a hundred and twenty to, to that number, a hundred, a hundred and twenty, you, you can see that we're, we're growing your district by around two hundred students, you know, when, when you get, when, when you get out five years, I'm growing your district by a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty students. Now, that's important be, because by that time, we're adding three hundred homes a year, so think of that point five yield, that's what we're doing there. Yes, yes, sir.
I just have a question.
So then the percentage that we're losing to charter schools, is that being included in those numbers that you're still seeing in positive?
Yes and no. We, we don't know about fut- future charter, but what we know right now, we've built that in, to what we think. That's why we haven't bounced your kindergarten as, back as mu- like back to where it was. You, you know, you, you were at six hundred and four, four, forty kindergarten students a few ye- years ago. We didn't go right there. Now, we're close, but that number at six fifty-five, I think we have for next year, yes, six, six fifty-five? That, that's a pretty mild growth, given you're adding two, two hundred homes. Because we think that could stay down there for a little while, till the, the houses get more new. But, but, but we, but we don't know about future charges. Yes, sir? This one? Oh, oh, the T A transfer report, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, and that's a really good point, Dr. Salazar. I'm glad you mentioned Hallsville, because I should have mentioned that. Because it's kind of hard to think of someone making a commute from here to East Texas every day, so that's, that's, that, that would be tough. No, that, that's great. That's, that's, you're hired. So I, yeah, I do believe that, you know, this adjustment that we made, I, you know, we typically would not, it's not really apples to apples, because it's done in April as opposed to October. But I really think that's where you could have been in October. And you're not the only district that, that has seen this. We've had several districts call us up and say, God, you're kind of, you're almost, we're, we're almost at your forecast already, and it's April, and you got us forecast this for next October. So we are doing that for a lot of districts, now going back and relooking at what, we're gonna have to name it something, but some kind of a mid-year bounce back, I think, from COVID, um, opportunity there. Certainly op- opportunity, I think, for the district to, you know, now we're showing over eleven thousand three hundred students. You know, within ten, ten years, so really, really some considerable growth there with the new housing. And, and you'll ha- have it here by campus as well. So finally, just some, just some key takeaways here. I, um, the, the enrollment declined a hundred and seventy-four students this fall, based on snapshot. Ag- again, the ISB enrollment saw an increase post-snapshot, revealing a decline of just over a hundred students. I, I do think that's important to, to keep in mind. Roughly six hundred and seventy lots are currently available to be built on right now. Six hundred and seventy lots that they, they could be starting to work on today, twelve hundred and fifty more lots. So that's almost two thousand lots that are gonna be ready to go. So it's just gonna be a matter of what the demand is and what the absorption rate, rate can be go- going forward. The, it's kind of a nudity, you got, I mean, this kind of pace with this many different developments is a little bit new to Los, to Los Fresnos, especially those big developments. So get some of the right builders in, in here, and they can go pretty quick. You know, the biggest challenges now are materials and, um, la- la- labor force. But if they get, you know, so, so it's taking longer, a, a home that used to be able to build in three months is now four to six months. So that's kind of what we're keeping on. We see an impact on enrollment from our, from, from some area charter schools, that's not gonna change. But we think that you'll be over two hundred students in the next five years, you'll add two, two hundred students. That's a positive gain, that, that, that's the, you know, that's your net gains there. And then it may approach eleven thousand three hundred students by twenty thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two. So that's all based on that kind of adjusted forecast there, those higher numbers. So with that, I'm happy to talk. If I can talk. Take a quick.
Any questions from the board? I have an observation, like, y- you did say that, um, there would be some growth. And it looks, only on the, um, I think it's the handout before that one. So it seems like the growth will happen at the elementary level, right? The middle schools and high school decreased.
Yeah, you typically see it in that K through sixth grade level, is where you, you see the highest cohort growth. You know, your high schools, you're always gonna have some negative cohorts at the ten, eleven, eleven and twelve. They, it, that's just the, the facts, whate- whether it's from mid-year graduates or, um, the students that are leaving to go to work. Um, and then ninth grade's usually a per- pretty high cohort, but that's more, that's more because typically it's a, we, we call them fresh more, just quite, n- not quite enough credits to, to be tenth graders. And then your si- your, your sixth and seventh grade, I think you could see some positive cohorts there a- as they come back, if they're, if they're ex- from a charter school in some cases. Um, and then, but your elementary level, that's where you're gonna see the, I think, the growth.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Stata?
Just a comment, um, reminder that, uh, some time back, we, we talked about this, uh, drop in enrollment, one point five, two percent for over three years. We were watching it to see if it wasn't like the water receding from the shoreline, and then it's a tidal, that, that's a signal of a tidal wave that's coming. We wanted to, to do this study, I, I think, again, we need to be very cautious of the fact that we're doing this. Um, as we come out of a pandemic, we'll continue to monitor these numbers, uh, and examine, what is it that developers know that we don't know? Like, why are so many of them making this, this investment at this time? We'll continue to, again, to monitor, and maybe reach out to, uh, Zonda Education again, to help us interpret the data, and we'll keep you, keep you informed. But we're definitely gonna be out there, uh, telling our stories, uh, now that, um, Mrs. Meadows is on board, telling our stories and, and making sure that new subdivision, that developers, uh, working with developers to see if that allows to put up our signs in their subdivisions, because that could be win-win for everyone. Make sure that people know that those lots are zoned to Los Fresnos schools.
Mr. Maya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You, I think it'd be interesting to see our classroom capacity compared to, to their projection.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Maya. We did, uh, work on that. We, we started today. We're gonna ask all, we're gonna visit with each one of our principals and, uh, reevaluate our classroom capacity. We know at the high school, uh, we have room for growth. At the ninth and tenth grade campus, not so much, but that's a campus that we're building in, in phases. Um, at Villarreal Elementary, where I had this perception that we still had eleven classrooms available and, because that was true a couple of years ago. That's not the case anymore. Uh, we have added programs that are good for kids, like standalone coding labs, uh, uh, for the special needs class, um, um, what do we call it? Tactile, sensory labs and computer labs. And so we've used up some of our capacity, but we're gonna revisit those numbers, uh, with, with our principals, uh, for, for exactly the reason that you, you asked. And we've also reached out to P E Ms, uh, asking, uh, we've asked Lestradeo to help us look at some of this data in different ways, look at it from different, different perspectives and see what, what we can flesh out. But we're really thankful to you that you allowed us the opportunity to work with, uh, Zonda Education. It's been really pleasant experience.
We, uh, we, we hope to actually talk this fall, just to get an update on your enrollment. You know, we, we always liked in this first year to not just go away. You know, we hope that you'll just call us and, you know, there's no fee for that, but just for us to understand what's happened, because that, that helps us long-term. It's kind of, September, October's kind of report card time for us. So we really would, would welcome the feedback.
Mr. Trevino? So just another comment. So whenever you spoke to these construction people, did they give you any indication as to why they were targeting Los Fresnos in this area?
You know, I, I don't know that Garrett got, got that specific with them. We would think it's because of some of the things like a SpaceX, or just some of the attractiveness of, of the area, the jobs. You know, I think there, there's just been some jobs being created, and they're, they're just seeing some momentum. I mean, really, these, these guys that do this are not, you know, they, they, they don't just guess. They, they really are, there's something that they're seeing. It could be just the housing demand, you know? They see, now, when, when your, your, your inventory was down to one and a half months. So there's obviously not enough inventory there, so that they're seeing an opportune to sell new homes. I think that's kind of what's drive, driving as well, that, that new product.
Mr. Henderson?
I notice on slide twenty-nine, we see the IDEA public school. That's in elementary or that junior high in our district?
They, they do something very interesting, where they take some of the lower grade levels, some of the middle school levels, and build out from there. It's a strategy they've been using.
They'll do a K one, two, and then they just let that grow into three, four, you know? They'll kind of start them sometimes that way, and then they grow them.
And then they weed them out in, after ninth grade. We've seen that too, I'm sorry.
Uh, do they have an active marketing program in place in, in our area?
They will like advertise at halftime in the Super Bowl and other prime, prime spots.
Yeah, you really gotta compete with them now. I mean, that's, it's becoming that way. Districts that we know throughout the state have asked us for different things that we can do to help them, you know, market, or try to help districts now kind of compete with that.
And those are conversations that we've had as well. Maybe we need to block walk like we did for the bond and, and, um, leverage relationships that parents may have with the campus in their neighborhood.
Thank, thank, thank you. It's been a pleasure here. And your, your team, Pablo, Jimmy, have, ev- everything's been great to work with too. So I, you know, I, I always love coming down here, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Yep.
I think the next item under district presentations is early literacy and the reading data that we're gonna go through. Dr. Stata?
Yes, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, um, so you've heard about our literacy initiative. Um, we have, uh, had held several activities, uh, after, as things began to improve. We've had, we've developed, uh, built an awareness about the importance of reading. Uh, I think we have celebrated in the past our, our student performance in the core areas and post-secondary readiness. But if we are going to move the needle on, in the area of reading and writing, then we need to begin looking closely at our, our lower grades. And, uh, to this end, we established a, a task force, a literacy task force, made up of teachers in kinder first and second. Who better to involve than the teachers who are actually doing, doing the work? Um, and so we, we, we have, we have prepared a, a brief presentation, uh, that we will share with you. We're gonna take you, uh, I know you don't like to get deep in the weeds of academics, but we feel it's important that as we move forward, you know what we're working on, we know, you know what we're, uh, targeting. And so we'll just dabble just a little bit, please bear with us, as we take you on this journey that into, um, the area of academics, which I know you like to defer to administration. Mrs. Landry, Executive Director for Office of Academics, will lead us, uh, through this presentation.
Good evening, President Garcia, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. Thank you for the opportunity to take you on a quick, deep dive of our literacy initiative. Uh, one piece of that, as we begin to look at reading data, as Dr. Salazar said, uh, we are really trying to evaluate our data, um, in the area of reading. As you recall, we brought to you before House Bill Three initiated early childhood literacy and math goals. Tonight, we're gonna specifically speak about those literacy goals. And remember, some of the things that they did there was creating reading academies, requiring phonics, highly effective teachers, um, and board adopted goals, which we've brought back to you just a couple of months ago. Why this matters is, if you recall, a couple of years ago, the state of Texas did, uh, their sixty by thirty goal. That goal was that eighteen to twenty-five year olds by the year twenty thirty, sixty percent of Texans would either have a value-added high school diploma, an industry-based certifications, like the ones we've been recognizing with C T E, or a diploma. And so part of that goal that the state of Texas created in order to make us the best, best workforce in the nation, uh, then came down to high school, and they set some college career and military readiness goals. And then all the way down to elementary, where they created an early childhood literacy and math goal, saying that by the year twenty thirty, sixty percent of third graders would meet expectations on STAR. And if you recall, we have three categories, approaches, meets, and masters. And so we're gonna take a little look at our data. So this is our district third grade data. Um, you will see it, it encompasses about the last five years. Um, and the blue line is what we want to look at. We know that, uh, the state of Texas recognizes approaches and allows us to celebrate that number, but meets is what we're looking at for this goal. The goal is to be at sixty percent of our students. And this is, um, these are percentages, um, that you're used to seeing on STAR, and you can see the dotted line across the top that is sixty. So even pre-COVID, um, we were falling just short in third grade. Sometimes data gets lost in, in the aggregate, right? When we're looking across all of our grade levels. And so we're trying to be extremely intentional as we look at early childhood, uh, data, and saying, what, what were the grade levels that led up to third grade? And how are each of those grade levels doing? So we're gonna take you through a little exercise today of looking at the data, seeing how deep we're trying to dig at our campuses, to find where are areas that we can improve in our early childhood literacy. We have set that, uh, the literacy initiative as a goal for our district, saying that there's nothing more important that we can do than teach a child to be truly literate. And that means they can read the words off a page, they can comprehend what they're reading, and then they can actually think through and use that information in order to make decisions or to shape opinions. And so that's what we want of all of our students, to truly be able to use that information, and then eventually, to be able to articulate that, uh, that information, right? Either through communication, verbal communication, or through written communication.
Uh, I'll point out here, since this slide is up there, um, if you think back to the public hearing where we present our district report card, uh, we're always above the region, above the state in most of, in most areas, right? And then even when we break it down by, by demographic. But we, we arrive, we get there with a lot of interventions. And so we know with the, um, with everything becoming more rig- rigorous, even the state assessment, what got us here is not gonna get us there, it's not gonna keep us there. So we have to do things, do things differently. And what if we improve literacy and have that performance without all of the interventions that we're, we're doing? So that is the reason why we're looking at reading, um, uh, improving our, our performance in literacy at, in early childhood.
Absolutely. Okay, I, before we jump into the data in your packets, I do have to just, we're gonna go through, um, how the data is a little bit different. We're used to looking at STAR data on a zero to one hundred, and so fifty-two percent is exactly what you think, right? Fifty-two percent of our students. But when we begin to look at early childhood data, that's through our MAP growth assessment that we've talked to you about before, tho- that data is represented through percentiles. And so when you're talking about percentiles, you guys probably remember this from college, right? Somebody messed up the bell curve and scored, they skewed the scores by being on one side or the other. But, uh, the straight center of that represents the fiftieth percentile. So fiftieth percentile is exactly average. And so that's where this begins to measure. So when you begin to see lower, uh, percentiles, it doesn't mean the same thing as those percentages do, right? It doesn't necessarily mean that you're failing, it means that you're falling within the average range. So all the data we're gonna look at from here on forward is on percentiles, not percentages. So when we begin to look at our district growth, we're looking at kinder first and second grade leading up to that third grade percentage. And we have had the opportunity to take our MAP growth, uh, reading assessment twice, once in the fall, once in the winter. So you can see the fall is in the blue, the winter is in the orange. And then what we can look at is the growth, which is in the gray. So what was the difference for our students between the, uh, what kind of growth did we see between the fall and the winter assessment? So we can see in kindergarten, our students So, we can see in kindergarten, our students, so that in the winter, they're at seventy, right? There, that is the seventieth percentile, which meant that the average kindergarten student in our district was performing higher than seventy percent of kinder students across the nation. And these norms were actually set in 2020, pre-COVID. So, our kinder students came in at the sixty-seventh percentile, so already performing well above average, pre-COVID. So, they were acting like COVID never even happened, right? So, this is a real high point. Not all real high points, but this is a real high point and something for us to be very excited about. We have anecdotal data already from pre-K teachers saying this is the highest pre-K class they've ever seen. And we know that the kinder class came in super as well. We look at first grade and we saw lower numbers. However, we saw that the average growth, that our students were growing faster than most students. They were at the fifty-eighth percentile, so scoring above average. And then, in second grade, you see kind of just a little bit of a dip there across the board. We saw that our students are not performing at average, with fifty being average. So, they're actually performing slightly below average. And that makes a lot of sense, right? Because these second graders last year during COVID, they missed first grade, one of the most critical years in learning and acquiring literacy skills. And so, our second grade teachers are doing a lot of work. And we can see our first grade students are behind as well. They missed kindergarten where they're mastering all those letter sound relationships. And so, there's been a lot of work to be done, and which is why, as we begin to shine a light on this and talk with teachers in our literacy task force in saying, what can we do to move the needle forward? How do we close these gaps for our students in order to get them back on track? Again, kinder being an anomaly, but a real highlight for us. Just a reminder, as we look at this data, it is on a RIT scale. And when I brought this to you before, the RIT is a vertical scale. Equal intervals as you go from kinder through twelfth grade. And that's what allows us to be able to measure growth over time, because students should be stepping, like, kind of like that stair step there. So, as we talk about RIT, that's what that means. It's this equal interval scale, unique to the MAP assessment data. So, if you will dig into your packet, the very first page on the top of your packet, thank you for indulging me in this. So, it has a little star on the bottom left-hand corner of the page, it looks like the one that's up on the board. And we've highlighted a few areas. This is actually our district data. So, you can see kindergarten through eighth grade, we do administer this reading assessment, kinder through eighth. And so, we have a couple of pieces of data that we're going to dig into. In order to dig into that data, I'm going to have you pull the two pages out right behind that. That is page three and page four. They look like this. You're going to see in the top-left corner, the pink box with the highlights. So, we're going to kind of look at that. The first page we're going to compare is, when you look at the fall data, the fall data is in the pink box, the winter data is in the yellow box. And if you look at that, page three, that is the data that corresponds to the fall and the winter assessment. This is what gives us the norm. So, we took our teachers through this experience and our administrators through these experiences of evaluating this data, because it's a whole new way of looking at data. And so, as you look across, you can see for each grade level, what was the average RIT score? Remember that vertical scale score. And we can see that, and that number probably doesn't mean a lot. It doesn't mean a lot to me if I'm looking at it just by itself. I have to go over and I have to look at my chart. And when I look at that chart, highlighted in pink, it shows me for grades K through eight in the fall, what was the average across the nation? We're talking about five million tests that are averaged together. What was the average? Now, this just means what was the average of the first graders who took that test in 2020? About every three years, they update these norms. And so, when we look at that and we compare our scores to the nation's scores, we can see, for example, in kindergarten, if you look at that, the first column, that mean RIT was one hundred and thirty-nine point zero. When I come over and look at that score on my chart, I see that the mean score for a kindergartner was one hundred and thirty-six point six five. So, again, it's showing us, right, that we are above the national average. But as you continue to go down and you look at first grade and then second grade, and you can continue to look down your comparison chart, you see that in first grade, we were one fifty-four, whereas the nation was one fifty-five point nine three. So, we've lost a little bit of ground. And then, again, in second grade, one sixty-nine point eight, and it was one seventy-two point three five. We lost a little bit more ground. Again, those norms were based on pre-COVID. I'm sure this is a phenomenon that all districts are seeing. But we know that we can't be complacent about that. And so, this was the district's average. And if you took that information over to the yellow column, you would see how we performed in the winter, compared to the yellow column on that same page three. And you could begin to see, and it begins to tell you in the far-right column, in the pink, in the far-right column, in the yellow, it tells us what our achievement percentile is. So, that means how well are our students achieving compared to the rest of the nation? And so, in kindergarten, we see in the winter, under that yellow box, we're at the seventieth percentile. We're performing, our kindergarteners are performing better than seventy percent of the kindergarteners across the nation. So, something to be really proud of and excited about. But when we go down to first grade, we see that we're only performing at about the thirty-eighth percentile. So, we know that we have work to do. And that has really renewed our focus on early childhood and looking at our tier-one instruction. All of our teachers are going through kinder through third grade right now, the reading academies. And they're really learning that science of teaching reading and understanding the best practices. And particularly for our students who may be second language learners, supporting all of the scaffolding that we need in order to do well with them. If you go past these two pages, you move on to two pages that are labeled Campus A and Campus B in the top right-hand corner. And we're just going to, we're going to dig into two campuses. You have all of the elementary campuses there that you can peruse and apply the same principle to. But you can see there, as you look at, let me take you there. As we look at Campus A data, and if you look down at the chart, we could continue to do the exercise of looking at the pink and comparing it to the pink, looking at the yellow and comparing it to the yellow. But at the bottom, what we're able to see real quickly is our observed growth. So, the bar graph, the column, shows what the growth was for the students at this campus versus what the expected growth was for the campus. So, at this campus in particular, we see very strong growth in kindergarten. We see that first grade, the first graders at this campus didn't quite meet the expected growth. That was based on how they performed at the beginning of the year, they predict out that growth, and they didn't quite meet where they were expected to grow for. So, we're having, yes, sir. Right here, yes, sir. So, and that is correlated up in the orange, so there's, I, I'm sorry, I did not highlight the growth. We weren't going to go, because I was just going to look at it here. But right above, you can see that growth percentage up above, or the growth, the RIT that they grew. And so, but these are the conversations. In the aggregate, it sometimes gets lost when you look at district data. So, we've got to dig down at each campus and begin to look at where are the strengths and where are areas that each campus can improve, the practices, in order to ensure that every child is ready to read at a meets level or masters level by third grade. And so, when you look at Campus A and then you look at Campus B, you can see there, different needs, different personalities. And so, that is part of our initiative of meeting with teachers to discover best practices amongst our campuses, looking at tightening our curriculum and making sure that the resources that we have are all best practice resources for our teachers as we attempt to continue to dissect this data and make sure we're providing our early childhood students the best possible literacy instruction that we can give them. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
This is a very good exercise for us to see exactly how you all drilled down, and this is just like one subject. So, thank you for putting it together.
I'm glad I took statistics, I didn't know if I would ever use that. I wasn't completely in the dark.
It does take, going back to some of your schooling, to figure all this out.
So, our task force will have to demonstrate a will, go where the data takes us, you know, to, if we're going to improve, and then let the data guide conversations, lead to conversations about our curriculum, about phonics and sight words, and all of the things that they're learning about in the reading academies that Mrs. Landry mentioned. So, the timing is perfect to be talking about this, because we're meeting that state requirement of the science of teaching and reading. For a number of years, we have emphasized and even celebrated performance. We are moving away from emphasizing performance, and we want to create a culture of growth mindset. And if we do that, then performance is going to take care of itself. So, just wanted, last time we brought it as a report, the report kind of got lost in pomp and circumstance of student recognitions. And today, we wanted to bring this to you as a presentation, to make sure that you know that we are working to move, not just in literacy, but in all areas, move towards a culture of a growth mindset. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Henderson?
First, I want to thank you all for drilling down, Ms. Landry, into this. I know you didn't have to, because again, at the last presentation, you know, we saw it, but we didn't notice the details. So, thank you for bringing the details to us. I also want to acknowledge that COVID and remote learning was probably a very difficult year for everybody. And I think you've done well, phenomenal, and now you're drilling down to know where we can identify and move forward. So, thank you for your commitment, your hard work, and your team. And if there's anything that we can do to help us, the board, to do something, please let us know.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move on to item number nine, district reports. Dr. Salazar?
Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, this evening, we present to you by way of reports, our financial reports. We'll entertain any questions you might have at this time pertaining to our financial reports.
Mr. Trevino?
Yes, how are we doing with our tax collection report?
Good.
Yeah, we're doing really, really well in tax collections. In fact, there's an item included in budget amendment of an unexpected revenue, additional revenue, which we put in, into revenue and expenditures as well, but we're doing well. Mr. Russell, do you want to expand on that, and you need to expand on that?
I'd be happy to. As far as tax collections, we're doing well. At the end of the day, the percentage that is there, there is a report that does convey that we're at ninety-three percent in comparison to last year's ninety-five. But overall, what we budgeted this year is at twenty-eight million. Out of the twenty-eight million, we've already collected twenty-six million. Compared to last year, we budgeted twenty-four million. So, you know, that in itself already shows that we've already collected more in our taxes. So, again, it comes back to the budget, the way the percentage kind of reads. But overall, the collections are very well, and they're in a very positive light.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
If not, the second report is the budget and tax calendar. Just, we like to keep you informed as to where we are. Right after the audit report, we begin the next cycle of our budget. And we have highlighted two very important dates in the month of August. So, we'll work towards that and keep you informed each month. We'll give you, bring you an update as to where we are. And then, there's the area of, well, let me pause here. Any questions pertaining to budget and tax calendar?
No, just, you pointed out the dates, and that's what I wanted. August eighth and August twenty-second are important dates for us. So, just kind of put those in your calendar so that if you can make the budget workshop in the public hearing, that would be important.
We met in this room for strategic planning. You began, the strategic planning begins with the board, ends with the board. We felt, again, that it was a very important time for us to revisit why we do what we do, revisit our why and where we want to go, how we want to change the teaching and learning in the next so many years. And since we last met here, there's been a series of meetings taking place. And we've amplified the voices of all stakeholders. The most fun have been hearing from our students who participate in roundtable discussions and just have added a whole lot to strategic planning. We thought this would be a great time. In June, we're going to bring you the final report. But this would be a good time to highlight some of the things. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Amato to hit on some highlights of our strategic planning and where we are right now. Mrs. Amato?
Thank you, Dr. Salazar. As he mentioned, we've been meeting with stakeholders. It's been interesting, but it's deep conversations, deep thinking. Our stakeholders include community members, business partners, parents, and staff members. And especially like Dr. Salazar mentioned, it's interesting, the involvement and the participation of our students. So, we met four times already here in the boardroom. And the last session we had, it was just last week, we had a SWOT analysis. I think this is the day that we really went in deep and started planning or thinking of the needs of our district. With a SWOT analysis, I know it's included in your, in your report, we had the strengths and the weaknesses. We went and analyzed what are some of the strengths and weaknesses that our district has. And if you notice, there's a lot of repetition, because there's about seven groups in this building here. And the most common in the strengths is the collaboration that is present in our campuses, in our district, and the communication. There's an atmosphere that everyone works together, we collaborate. So, we knew we had to take that strength and bank on that as we start planning. Some of the weaknesses, we know, they mentioned, there's systematic practices, making sure that there's consistency, that they could fix some, we had some processes that are systematic, we could fix some of the weaknesses that we have. Also, we knew that there's technology and programs consistency. There was been, after COVID and after we went through one-on-one technology providing for students, they said we have a lot of programs, we have much technology, and it could be a weakness, because now we have to learn this program, now we have to advance in this technology. Now, with these, we said there's also opportunities. What opportunities are present in our district at this time that can help us start planning? And I know that I mentioned that, the group mentioned, technology was the weakness, but it's also an opportunity. How do we take that technology and integrate it into the learning? Student and community collaboration. We knew within the room, again, students and parents and community are present, to say we want to be involved. So, take that opportunity in them. With growth, it was mentioned, and Mrs. Landry mentioned, that we need to do things differently. And we're going to take that opportunity right now and start working on, on looking for, how do we establish some growth in all our programs? And then, we know that there are some threats. And some of the threats that I can, that I'm going to point out is complacency, not willing to change. That we're okay the way we are, we know we have to do things different, so let's work on that. Human resources, they're saying we have great teachers, great human capital in our district. How do we compensate? How do we provide professional learning sessions? How do we look into the wellness? We talked about not only the mental wellness, but also the physical wellness of our teachers, the stress that they've gone through. How do we look into ensuring that we're taking those opportunities for them? After that, we looked at the critical After that, we looked at the critical, taking the opportunities and making some statements. If we could only do blank, then we would be able to do blank. So if you notice, the next two pages in that report are just in groups and looking at how do we take those opportunities and establish some strategies that we could do. And then we finalized with, well, not actually, we did some goals. Creating, created based on the critical opportunity statements that we developed. What are some goals that we're looking at as a district, as a stakeholder, that we could take these opportunities and create these goals? And we finalized it with collaborative learning framework, looking at the teacher collaboration and planning and how to design engaging lessons. So the last, the stages of the framework was saying, how do we plan our lessons? How do we communicate to our students? How do we provide innovative activities in those lessons? And engaging in meaningful experiences? And how do we reflect on what we've taught, what we've learned, to make sure we reinforce and we refine our teaching and our learning? And how do we adapt to any of these challenges in their thinking and their growth? And we need to adapt our lessons. How do we do that in collaboration with our teachers? So that is where we're at at this point. We have four more stakeholder meetings before we come in the month of June and present our final product.
The experiences of the past twenty-four months threaten to dilute or maybe even lead us to forget why we do what we do, the moral imperative behind the work that we do. And this has been a bit of a revival of sorts of our commitment to those we serve. It's been a very, very positive experience. And we are thankful, again, that you allowed us the resources and you supported us with the resources to go through this. We will be revisiting where we are tomorrow with our principals, during our principals' meeting, and eventually rolling out the entire strategic plan at an administrator's retreat that is scheduled for July. So thank you again, and we'll entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments from the board? I mean, this is an excellent exercise. I think sometimes we, we talked about complacency. We think we're doing well, we wonder how we can do better. But if you don't know what we need to be better at, it's hard to focus on that. So that's, I mean, seeing all that is, I mean, it's a great exercise. Thank you for sharing it and for lending it. There's nothing else from the board? We'll move on to item number ten, consent agenda. There are nine items on consent agenda. If any board member would like to pull an item, please raise your hand, and we will. Otherwise, I'll take a motion on consent agenda. Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve consent agenda as written on today's agenda.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? Ms. Quintero, a second? All those in favor of passing the nine items on consent agenda as listed on the agenda, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven, action items. The first item is to discuss and take action to approve selection of an architectural firm for the district's performing arts/multi-purpose center construction project and delegation of authority to the superintendent related to the same. Do I have a motion from the board? Mrs. Trevino?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the ranking of architects as presented by the administration. Select ERO to provide architectural services for the district's performing arts/multi-purpose center construction project based on their demonstrated qualifications and authorize the superintendent to negotiate a fair and reasonable contract for these services in accordance with chapter twenty-two fifty-four of the Texas Government Code before bringing a final contract back to the board for final approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo? Are there any questions or any comments from the board? There being no questions, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. Item number two, discuss and take action to renew contracts, agreements for property, equipment... Let me reread that. For property, equipment breakdown, and terrorism insurance, CSP number nineteen dash twenty dash thirty-nine, with various insurers as proposed by Shepherd Walton King Agent effective May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Motion to approve it.
Do I have a second? Ms. Quintero? Are there any questions on the motion? There being no questions, all in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. Item number three, discuss and take action to approve the Villarreal Elementary Waterline Easement for the Ormito Waterline for the Ormito Water Supply Corporation. Do I have a motion? Ms. Quintero?
I motion to approve action number three.
Do I have a second? Mr. Trevino? Are there any questions on the motion? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. Item number four, discuss and take action to approve the purchase of five new seventy-seven passenger school buses from Buy Board Vendor Longhorn Bus. Do I have a motion? Ms. Quintero?
I motion to approve action item number four.
Do I have a second? Mr. Maya? Any questions or comments from the board? I have a comment. I remember when buses were eighty thousand dollars. But that was a lot. So I was a little shocked. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. Item number five, discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following position for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. We have a teacher. All those in favor? I mean, I didn't get a motion. Do I have a motion? Ms. Quintero?
Yes, I motion to approve action item number five.
Do I have a second? Mr. Trevino? Are there any questions? I'm losing my voice again, sorry. Are there any questions from the board? Discussion? There being no discussion or questions, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. And they're not here because all I see is Ms. Maya representing. Thank you for staying. There are no other action items. You do not need to go into closed session. Dr. Sosa, do you have any announcements?
Yes, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, on Friday, April twenty-second, at six-thirty PM, at Diorilar, you can experience the Los Fresnos High School Powder Puff. On Thursday, April twenty-eighth, at six PM, we have an employee awards banquet. We'll send you a reminder. This will be held at the Brownsville Event Center. Saturday, April thirtieth, at seven PM, the high school will be hosting prom at the Amigo Land Center. And the next regular school board meeting will be held on Monday, May ninth, at six PM at the same location. Those are all the announcements we have at this time.
Thank you, sir. Any announcements from the... I have it. Okay, I actually have it in my purse. And that, and we have to do that even though we did the app? Okay. Well, why did I bother with the app? Yeah, and I know you all have to take time off of work, and some of you have to leave your children or your pets. So thank you for doing that because it can be... They're great sessions, but it can also be a hassle for all of us to take off. So thank you for doing that. And I think that's all we have. So it's eight oh two, I adjourn this meeting.